Yeah.
All right. Yeah, this works out. Call to order, the Madison District Public Schools, Monday, November ninth, general meeting. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Castle.
Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic.
Okay, can I get a roll call attendance, please?
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, here.
Ms. Castle.
Here.
Mr. Kimball.
Here.
Mrs. At.
Here.
Mr. Pittman.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Absent with notice.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
All right. Next, we move into public fundamental. There's time reserved at each meeting for the public to speak. It's called public comments. About three minutes. As long as you follow the rules. You're good. So who do we have first, Sarah, that wants to speak?
Tom Smith.
All right, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith?
He's still muted.
I asked him to unmute.
No. I'm sorry. My clear now?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. I'm Tom Smith. I've only got a couple of comments, so maybe I won't be interrupted this time. The last board meeting held on October 5th with only five trustees present was the best I've seen in two years. The trustees present handled the public's business with focus, efficiency, and good manners. It was a pleasure to see. Thanks to those trustees who served the community so well. I expect this to be the appropriate behavior going forward. The results of the election have brought us one former trustee, one current trustee, and two newbies. I'm happy to have the experienced trustees, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the new people bring. They both made comments about the importance of transparency and budget. I think this has been a very transparent board for the last two years, so I want to see what they think is going to improve. I've also thought that the budget has been appropriately implemented, so I want to see what's going to change with that. I'm interested in how these comments bear out now that they have to put them into practice. That's all I have for now. Let's see how things develop. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, is there anyone else, Sarah?
Uh, Mr. Steve Bazler.
Okay, Mr. Bazler, go ahead. Mr. Bazler?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Board of Education. Um, it's been brought to the Athletic Boosters' attention that some board members, as well as community members, have some questions or concerned about the Madison Athletic Boosters. Although not required per, uh, per board policy, as the president, I'd like to bring the board up to date on a few booster activities that we've been able to achieve since establishment of March of 2019. I'd like to point out that we've had our finances reviewed by the district and are not required to do so again until January of '21. The Booster Club is recognized as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization through the IRS, as well as a nonprofit through the state of Michigan. Booster bylaws were submitted and approved by the superintendent. All fundraisers that have been ran were approved by the superintendent. We've accomplished a lot during the 2019-2020 school year. Some things that we were able to purchase were new cheer poms for the cheer team, seven-on-seven football shirts, volleyball warmups and pink-out jerseys for the girls that weren't able to afford them, JV football pink-out socks, seventh-grade boys' basketball warmups, varsity girls' basketball warmups, team dinners, a fall sports banquet, and a Wilkinson scoreboard. Due to COVID, Boosters hasn't been able to fundraise this school year. We hope once things get back to the new normal, we can continue to do amazing things for the students in the district. Although not necessary, we are hoping to do that with the support of the Board of Education. Parent groups are more successful when supported by the entire district and community. If you have any further questions, please reach out to the boosters or myself. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bazler. Do we have anyone else?
Yeah, Rusty Rogers is not able to raise her hand, but she did just notify me, um, so Rusty Rogers, I believe her name is Ms. Rogers on, um, the name on the chat.
All right, Ms. Rogers, go ahead. Ms. Rogers?
Uh, oh, there I am, sorry, thank you. Um, uh, good evening, everyone. My name's Rusty Rogers. Some of you may know me as Rusty Mullner, and I am speaking on behalf of the Teachers of the Madison Education Association. Not only have I been a teacher in the district for 17 years, but I grew up in Madison Heights. I lived in Madison Heights for 37 years. I went through Madison schools, and I graduated from Madison High School. I still feel a very integral part of this community, and I am an Eagle for life. And with everything going on, um, we still think that our opinions for this pandemic need to be outweighed by the statistics and the numbers and the rise of COVID cases, mainly those related to our schools. Until the circumstances improve, the Madison Education Association recommends that we continue the 2021 full year virtually and return those who are in seat to remote learning. In spite of our district's efforts, we are still faced with unsafe conditions and the lack of staff to effectively teach our Madison children in person. The health and safety of all educators, students, and families is top priority. Last time we spoke to the board was in August, when the case positivity rate was under 3%, and we were averaging one positive case per 10,000 people. We've worked tirelessly, hoping and planning for our students' return for three months with our departments, buildings, and with Mr. Abdullah Had. Today, according to Michigan and Oakland Health Departments, the case positivity rate is approaching 10%. In Madison Heights, we just reached 44.7 cases per 10,000 people. It's heartbreaking that we are not making the necessary progress in Oakland County, nor Wayne or Macomb, where some of the families we also serve live, to mitigate the very real risk we all face. We realize that continuing to bring students back into classrooms are the recent spike could exasperate the situation. In addition, it is very likely that this spread will continue as winter arrives. Within the past two weeks, our district has had three confirmed positive cases and several quarantining in every building but Wilkinson Middle School. It should be noted that Wilkinson has the highest percentage of teachers working from home on the days where that is an option. Many of the surrounding districts that have been brought students back face-to-face instruction, even while giving families the option to keep their children virtual, are returning to all virtual instruction. Families who were sending their children back to school are now faced with telling them that they are back to virtual and scrambling to make arrangements once again. By remaining virtual through January, we will be keeping consistency for our families as well as our staff. Teachers are working hard to provide successful virtual educational opportunities to continue to keep everyone safe. The Madison Education Association admits to working together with the district towards providing a safe and robust education for our students. Regardless if it's virtually or face-to-face, we urge the district to keep health and safety as its highest priority and acknowledge that it is not the time to bring students back into the buildings. We will continue to work with the district and Mr. Abdullah Had on a plan for how best to reopen our schools and do what is right to keep everyone safe. Thank you very much, and with all due respect, the Madison Education Association.
All right, thank you. Uh, Sarah, is there anyone else?
No, there's no hands raised.
Okay, let's move on to the superintendent report. Mr. Abdullah Had.
Good evening, um, Board of Education. Um, Sarah Muller, if you could find Sarah Cummings and unmute her. And, um, part of my superintendent's report will be the COVID report. Um, but I also want to, uh, just give the board an update on, um, the insurance claim that we had with, um, uh, Keys Grace Academy Building, the Edison Building. Uh, we received an initial payment of 200 and approximately $242,000 for the first payment, uh, for electrical work and, uh, preparations and mitigations and cleanup. We will receive the other, uh, $200,000 upon completion, um, of work from, uh, Jarvis. And, um, then, once that's completed, we will provide the Board of Education, uh, a complete report. Uh, but this is our way of, of keeping you informed, keeping the public informed, um, of the ongoing status of where we are with, um, Edison Building. Now, we will talk about, um, COVID cases, so I will turn the time over to Sarah Cummings. I'll be sharing my screen as we discuss, um, um, some, some data from COVID. Sarah Cummings, are you, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Which, which one do you want to start with first?
Um, I think it would be a good idea to review our case numbers from our last board meeting, uh, in October to see how things have changed.
Okay.
So that, those were, uh, September numbers.
Okay, one second, let me get to that. All right, here we go. Can everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay. So, the important numbers here, when we're reading across the top, the confirmed, total confirmed and probable cases reported in Oakland County in 14 days. We, we were sitting at around 1,000 last time, and it was, um, trending downward. Another important number here, very important, is the cases a day per million population. And we were at 66 and then, uh, 58. That, uh, also is an important number, just to kind of remember that one, and we'll, we'll come back to that one. Um, as we go down, I don't want to bore you with a whole bunch of numbers. I just want to, um, point out the important ones. So down here, the percent, percent positivity, we're sitting at 3.32%. And our county level risk determination was high. Um, but that has since been changed into letter grades, so high corresponds to a, a C, each one of those. And then, when you look down below with, uh, the cases by age group, um, those numbers were fairly low as well in each. Now, if you go into our newest report.
Okay, hold on, let me pull that, let me pull.
Yep, those numbers have significantly changed and gone up.
Okay, let me pull that, one second.
So this is, as you can see at the top, it goes through, uh, November 3rd. We were sitting at 3,786 cases here. So Oakland County releases, um, data, um, by day. They don't, they don't give us all of these numbers per day, but they do give us total confirmed probable cases each day. So I went ahead and crunched the numbers from 11:03 up until today, and, and instead of this number up here, 3,786, that number today sits at 5,595, which has gone up astronomically. Uh, as well as, so this next number here, the 261, that's the cases a day per million population. Remember on the previous one, I said it was sitting at 58? That one has gone up to, uh, 261. This is an important number because this is a number that the state uses in order to give us our letter grade. Um, the 14-day average daily case counts sitting at 270. Death counts, 0.5. The tests per day are around 45 to 5,000. Um, percentage of confirmed probable cases hospitalized, that number is down as far as, um, until November 3rd. I'm suspecting that number is going to be back up. Beaumont just released a statement today saying, as of tomorrow, they're going to start restricting visitors again at their campuses because of the cases are going up. Um, the percent positivity is up significantly, that's 8.57. Um, the screen before that I had shared with you, that number, if you remember, that was 3%. Now we're up, um, closer to 9%. Healthcare capacity is strong. What that means is bed availability and hospital capacity, so that's good. And, um, the testing, tracing, containment infrastructure, that's, um, the testing availability and Oakland County Health Department, their availability, capability to do contact tracing. So this, these letter grades down here, county level risk determination. We were, last time, sitting at a C.
Can I, um, Sarah, can I just, uh, give the context and then share it and then allow you to?
Sure.
Discuss. So, um, every Thursday, we meet with Oakland County Health Department and all the superintendents. Last week, Thursday, we met, we were at a, um, risk factor C. So what I'll do is I'll share the screen while I'm explaining things to you. Hold on one second. So last week, Thursday, we were at a risk factor of C. We meet with Oakland County Health Department, where they inform us that they're going to downgrade us from a C to a D. So we said, okay, well, that's manageable. We could do, we, we could continue. We don't have, um, outbreaks or transmissions in the building. And suddenly, that same night, Thursday night, I, I, I believe it was Thursday night, they moved us to an E. Now, if you look at E, Sarah, now you could just bounce in. So in two days, they moved us from a C to an E. And then, this is if you have no cases in your building, if you look up here. This is if you have known cases in staff or students, but no ongoing transmission. And this is if you have ongoing transmission within your building. These are the considerations that they want us to consider.
So if you scroll down just a little bit more, it'll show, yeah, on the bottom right, where, um, the red corresponds to the E, where it says 150 or greater cases per million. Soon as you hit that 150 cases or 20 or greater percent positivity, that's going to put you in an E. So, um, we were sitting at 150, which is why they put us in E, but now all of a sudden, we're up to 260. So we've sur, far surpassed the, the 150, uh, threshold. Our percent positivity is still around 9%, which is good, but the cases per million have gone way up. So when you, um, go back up to the top and you can see, um, no cases in the school building, then you're going to consider pa, pausing for 14 days, um, instruction. Building with known cases in staff or students, but no ongoing transmission. So what, the ongoing transmission, what that means is that you can see a definite link of the cases within the building. So we had two cases at Madison Elementary, but they were completely unrelated. There's, so there was no, um, ongoing transmission within the building. It was two separate cases. And the third column is buildings with evidence of ongoing transmission. So that means that you can clearly see that it's going from student to student, staff to student, or, uh, student to staff. So we would fit, uh, the middle one. We have known cases in the building, but no ongoing transmission. What the Health Department is saying is, uh, the transmission is happening, um, generally with, in relation to sports, travel, and, um, gatherings. If you, if you want to go over the numbers for the kids, Mr. Abdullah, on, on the bottom of the, the COVID report.
Sure.
Real quick, they can see the numbers for the age groups.
Okay, one second. Right down here.
Yeah, so this just kind of points out the general trend. The numbers are going up in each age group. It's the highest in, uh, 14 to 18-year-olds and, as well as up to like the, the college-age kids. That's, that's where the cases are going up, though, the quickest. So when we were looking at the cases before our, our last meeting, the 14 to 18-year-olds, they had 75 cases, and now we're up to 256. Uh, the 10 to 13-year-olds are sitting at 37, then we went to 55 to 87. So you can see there's a general trend of all the numbers that are going up.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, Board of Education, do you guys have any questions for our nurse?
I don't.
I don't.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
So, um, that, that's my report right now. Um, the rest will, will, uh, be discussed during our return, um, to school, um, plan later on in the agenda, Mr. President. So that's all I have.
All right, uh, then we move on with the Board of Education action items. First one, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the proposed minutes from the 10, October 10th, or October 5th, 2020 regular board meeting. Uh, does someone have this motion?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. At. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second.
Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Uh, discussion? Nope. Okay, roll call votes, sir?
Mr. Holcomb.
He's muted.
There you go.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next item, before we go through with this motion here, Mr. Abdullah Had. Uh, I would like to know what your recommendation is for the revisit extended COVID-19 learning plan?
So.
Mr. Abdullah?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, you just caught, you just caught me off guard. Um, I, I, I think, following the data, i- i- it's just safer. It's just safer to go remote. Um, operationally is, is one, but also for the health and safety, not only of our staff. Um, I'm, we're not even in person, and we've had, you know, between seven and 12 people quarantining, um, and operationally, you can't manage. Um, it's not like you can replace teachers. Um, it, it is, is safer for our staff and our students to continue remote until, my recommendation would be to continue remote until we get either upgraded from an E to a D or a C. But I would say, uh, if we go up to a D, let's revisit it. If we move to a C, let's revisit it. And I would recommend that we re, I mean, we legally, we have to revisit that, um, every month anyway, Mr. Uh, Kimball.
Correct, correct. The state requires us to every 30 days.
So my recommendation is to, is to go remote.
Mr. Abdullah Had, I have a question. Is that for everyone? The students that have already gone back to school, would they continue, or would they be?
So, th- this is, this is what I'm, uh, i- if we get this wrong, if we get this wrong and somehow we have transmission or someone is hospitalized, um, you don't know what the outcome is. If you go remote, um, worst-case scenario is we overreacted and we went fully remote.
Okay.
But if, if we don't, I'd rather overreact than underreact and just say, hey, let's continue. It's working, let's continue, and then, God forbid, something happens to our teachers, our students, or both. Because, you know, you just, there's a reason we are at a E. There's a reason we're at a E right now. Um, a- and we have an obligation as a board and as a district to, to look out for not only our students, but our staff.
Definitely.
And so I, I would probably recommend that full remote. Until we get upgraded, until we get upgraded to at least a D. But C would be ideal.
Okay. Oh, I agree. I just, in case any parents were watching that are already.
Mr. Abdullah, uh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. A question I've got, does that include, uh, going remote for all sports?
I, I think you guys have to ta, uh, I don't know how you could go remote for sports. My, my.
Essentially cancel sports for right now.
Or push them back. I, I don't understand. I, I mean, I, I don't fully support MHSAA's theory behind that because every meeting we have with Oakland County Health Department, Sarah Cummings chimed in on this. Every time we talk to them, they pla, they blame organized sports and sports for the, for the transmission. And yet, MHSAA gives us different guidance. So if it's safe enough to, to have wrestling or basketball, uh, or, or, so how is that not safer than our students to return? How can you have one and not the other? And it doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense.
Each time I'm in a meeting with the Health Department, they say transmission is not within the schools themselves.
And who's talking?
Comes from, they're coming. It comes from, uh, sports, sports, travel, and gatherings is where they say that it comes from. And within the school community, it, most of, most of the cases are coming from sports.
All right, anyone else have questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Ms. Castle.
With that, with that in mind, um, you haven't read the motion yet. I understand you're asking for a status. But I would recommend then, when we do get to the motion, that we would revise it to, um, suspend sports.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question now, that we can do just that. That's why I'm asking questions now, so we can do just that.
Yes, but I'm, I'm, I'm recommend, I'm, I'm willing to change, to amend the motion.
All right, anyone else? No? All right, and the motion I'm going to read is recommended the Board of Education take action on the extended COVID-19 learning plan. At this time, the board would vote to extend remote learning for all students in the district, including rescheduling or cancellation of in-person sports. Does anyone have that motion?
I'll take it.
Okay. Uh, which, which one of you took it?
I did.
Okay.
No.
Okay, we got a second now, discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pittman, go ahead.
So this is one motion. It's not one motion for learning and one for, uh, sports. It's one motion for both.
To return everything to remote, including rescheduling or cancellation of in-person sports.
Yeah, all right. That's gonna, that's not gonna, I don't know that that can happen, Mr. President, because sports, you, you play against other schools, you know, and, uh, anyway.
What do you mean? I don't get what you mean.
Well, how do you schedule if they don't cancel sports or, um, you know, how are we going to postpone them if other schools don't? We're going to be, we'll postpone, just as an example, basketball, and they're going to be done with, they may be done with, finished with basketball.
Hey, I, I, you know what? I don't disagree with you, but at this point in time, our concern is our students, our staff. And I would simply say if, if you don't agree with it, vote against it.
Yeah, and I, I just, that's why I, I'm just asking.
Sure. No, 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 there's no problem with it, with that.
Mr. President.
Okay. Ms. Castle, go ahead.
Can I ask, I'd like to ask Mr. Abdullah Had a question. Um, Mr. Abdullah Had, do you have a feel at all for what the other schools are doing with these in-person sports?
I know some.
The whole county's been downgraded from a C to an E.
Some of them are following MHSAA guidelines. So some of them, for example, um, like a Ferndale, we might not be playing them, but, uh, like a Ferndale have been, uh, remote for a while now, and they're going to continue, but for sports, they're still following MHSAA guidelines.
Okay.
Um, Sawfield, although remote for the semester, they're following MHSAA guidelines. I personally don't think MHSAA guidelines, um, are, I, I think they're conflicting with what the Health Department is saying. And, and so i- if I'm hearing from the Health Department saying that organized sports are, are overall a huge factor in the transmission, and then I, I get an email from H, MHSAA saying differently. So, you know, I, I.
Well.
I'm sorry?
Let me, let me interject right there.
I interrupted.
To say that we're deciding for the next thirty days. If the numbers change, if we get upgraded to a D or C back where we were, this can all be redone again. I mean, it has to by state law every thirty days. What we're dealing with is the immediate thirty days with the huge rise in cases. So having said that, who's next? Mr. Pittman, you had something to say?
No, I, what I said was, I think it's all, it's political with the county has, follows a different political guideline than MHSAA. So anyways, that's what I think.
I don't doubt that whether that's true or not, but the numbers show a different picture altogether.
We can only go with the numbers we're given. I hear that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do we want to do a roll call vote on this? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Pittman?
No.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure this is for a ninety-day hiatus for.
Actually, we have to reassess this by state law every thirty days. You know, with any good luck, the numbers go in the other direction just as quickly as they went in this direction, we could be looking at a whole different situation just thirty days from now.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Sure. All right, next item, Madison High School roof. I believe, Mr. Abdullah Had, you want to explain this? This is to get estimates on the roof at the high school, is that correct?
Yeah, I'd like to have Ms. Dr. Hill, Edwina, if you could chime in and explain this. And also, Edwina, if you could read the letter that we received
Okay.
to the board and then explain the RFP to the board as well, please.
Okay. Well, basically, I wrote up our RFP because we, we are in dire need of a new roof on the high school. And and this estimate also is the cost of repairs, but as Mr. Abdullah Had wanted me to read for you, we were, we were told that the roof was too far gone, too saturated, too saturated to be repaired. And at this point, you know, because we waited and everything.
Dr. Hill? Can you read the letter exactly as it stated by the vendor, please?
Okay. See, here we go. The vendor is Lux Roofing. And it says, "The purpose of this letter is to provide a recap of our finding for the above referenced building. During inspection, we walked the interior of the building with Dawn. It was brought to our attention that this roof had several leaks in various locations. While walking the roof, we noticed a correlation between the leak areas and the older roof systems. Conclusion, the cold tar buildup roofing is completely saturated with moisture. It is our professional opinion that the defected roof areas are damaged beyond repair. Furthermore, it is, it was our observation that the previous repair efforts were done in an unsophisticated manner. Our company would recommend that a roof consultant be considered to initiate a bid process on the problem roof sections. It also may be a good idea to consider using less roofing on future repairs for not only this building, but other school buildings within the distance as well. If any re-roofing budgets are required, please do not hesitate to call." So this is from the conclusion from Lux Roofing. It basically said the roof was too far gone the way that it is and you need a new roof.
In the previous, in the previous repair jobs, were done unsophisticatedly and they cited that.
Yes.
And it's so saturated that you can't just patch on tar over a saturated and just consider that a patchwork. And thus, we are at this, at this stage of the game, recommending that you authorize us to put out a RFP bid for an entire new roof for Madison High School.
All right, based on that, let me read the motion. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the district to bid a new roof or roof repair for Madison High School. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Do I have a sec?
I'll second. Okay. Who seconded?
Okay.
Gloria?
Discussion?
Mr. Abdullah Had, how many bids are we going to get?
So when you do an RFP bid, you open it up. I believe you, you, you put out a fourteen or twenty-one day and you could get as many bids as possible. You have a bid announcement and a bid window where it closes, and then you have to read each bid out loud publicly. And you have to allow any bidder to sit and witness the opening of the envelopes and the announcement. So if we get thirty bids, I will present all thirty bids to the board and then the board will choose the bid of their choosing. So there could be an unlimited amount of bids. We are looking for the most qualified, best priced. We're looking for it all. Right now, I got an estimate from Barton Mallow that was averaging about eighteen dollars a square foot. They did inform me that once we go out for RFP bid, it might be as low as fourteen or even low because people are going to be competing. So, and we have approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of roof at the high school.
All right, any further questions? No? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next item is approval of asbestos designated person. It's recommended the Board of Education approve Jamie Thiel, Director of Human Resources and Operations as the district's asbestos designated person in accordance with the board policy eighty-four thirty-one. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, Mrs. Ah, thank you. Discussion? Anybody?
What, what does this consist of? What's, what's he going to have to do?
He had to get training. We had not done, we have not gotten training and we didn't have, not have a designated asbestos person, I believe, for over four or five years. So he is, we had to take classes to get training and to be the point contact for, to be, to follow the accountability procedures for asbestos. So he had to take some classes. Jamie, if you could also talk a little bit about.
Sure, yeah, I was responsible for making sure our custodial and maintenance staff are trained annually and then I'm responsible for the asbestos inspections every three years. And contractors are performing work on site, you know, responsible for making sure that they have access to our asbestos reports, which there's a copy kept at each building.
Good. Anyone else? No? Can I get a roll call vote, sir?
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next motion, approval of identification of the superintendent and asbestos designated person. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution that identifies Angel Abdullah Had Superintendent and Jamie Thiel, Director of Human Services for Operations from personal liabilities related to the inspection and reporting of asbestos. Will someone take that motion, please?
I'll take it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pittman?
Okay, so this indemnifies, does everybody know what indemnify means, all of the board anyway?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so that basically holds them harmless, right? Like you can't, you know, nothing, whatever, if anything goes wrong, the board, the district has to defend them basically, right?
I believe that's accurate.
Okay, so in this, is this a standard, I guess, what is this, an indemnification contract or whatever that is in our board packet?
Yeah, it's a resolution. Nova Environmental is the one that trained me on this and this is a pretty standard resolutions that school boards adopt for their designated asbestos person and the superintendent.
And I just kind of read through it and one of the sentences it says here that "This indemnity shall include all acts of such individuals, even if deemed to be acts of negligence on their part." So we're going to indemnify even if they're negligent. I'm not saying I'm not going to vote yes and I'm just putting that out there that that's what this is.
Mr. Thiel?
Yes.
Did you say that this, this motion, this indemnification is boilerplate for the industry?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what Nova Environmental explained to me.
All right, because I would assume no one would do it if it wasn't. All right, any other questions? No? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
All right, next motion is approval of administrator contract. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the master agreement between the Madison District Public Schools, Board of Education and the Madison District Association of Administrators. First off, will someone take this motion? Barb?
Motion. Sorry, I'll take it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Now discussion. Who would like to go first?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Abdullah Had, this is for you. So this contract is, is there any major changes from the last that you want to highlight for us?
There was a lot of changes. Part of healthcare and just to ensure that we're compliant, we sent the contract over to Trune.
Right.
And they marked it up for us to ensure that we were compliant.
Okay. Yeah, I would have thought there would have been change, there would, it looked like there was some changes due to what's been going on. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
They had things in there like a typewriter that, you know, and we had to bring it up to, to date.
All right, anyone else? No? We get a roll call vote, sir?
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next item is Keys Grace Academy offer for Edison property. The Board of Education authorized empower Mr. Abdullah Had to take all necessary steps to close the sale of Edison property at twenty-seven three twenty-one Hampton Street, Madison Heights, Michigan, four eight oh seven one. Will someone take this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Now we move to discussion, but before we do that, Mr. Abdullah Had, what changed from the letter of intent that we initially approved?
The initial offer was one point one five million. We went back and negotiated, given that, you know, they're, they're getting new electrical paneling and new boilers and what have you. So we got the full appraisal offer of one point three million this time. So we have an increased offer of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Now, any, anybody got questions, discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Pittman, go ahead.
I, I'm going to go, I'll start with that your, the comment was a revised offer from Keys Grace Academy and just like last time, the first line of this says, "This letter of intent is not intended to create a binding agreement on the seller or the purchaser to purchase." So it is not an offer, right? So I just wanted to get that, make that clear to all of us. And, you know, what, what also comes usually with an offer is a proof of funds, things like that. Have we seen anything like that yet?
They're working, they're working on that to, to actually provide a hard offer. That's why in the motion is to authorize me to, you know, close the sale of it. That way I don't have to keep coming back. They are going to produce that. As soon as they produce that information to me, I will disclose that information to the Board of Education. I will send that information to you.
Okay, so we are not, we are, we have never really made the motion on whether to put this out, have we, to multiple offers, multiple bids, like list the property and get, you know, just like we're doing on the roof, you know, we're not doing that. That, that, we've already decided that. I don't remember if we voted on that or not.
Yes, we did.
You're correct.
We did vote on it that it's going to be them and we're not putting it out.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just, we're going to have Mr. Abdullah Had and then really no, I mean, no disrespect. This is a, you know, more than a million dollar transaction here. We, I know we had made a motion and voted, approved a motion a few months ago for him to hire a broker service or to interview broker services to help with this negotiation. Have we done that?
That, that, that was supposed to be put out to bid. That's a good question, Mr. Abdullah. Have you done any research on that yet?
We actually are engaging Trune Law Firm.
Okay.
We are engaging.
For the transaction?
Yep. And to ensure that we are crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is and ensuring all the paperwork's done. Trune is neutral on that and, you know, with them already having legal services with us, they're the ones that informed us that we still have, even though we, we sell it for one point three million, we have two hundred and fifty thousand in outstanding bonds that are attached to that building that we weren't aware of. So even though you're selling the building for one point three million, there are bonds that were attached to that building that we didn't even know about. So we have to pay that back. So we might net around a million after it's all said and done.
Okay, so.
Did Trune give you any ballpark of what this is going to cost to do this transaction through them?
No.
Mr. Abdullah Had?
Yes.
The fact that, when did you find out about those bonds?
I think they emailed Dr. Hill maybe two and a half weeks ago.
Well, based on that, can't we have that as part of the, our, the, our, what do you want to call it, our counter offer or whatever that we'd like to see them pay those off, pay those back? Or do you think that's not even?
I don't think it, I don't think it works like that. I think.
We have to take them, we have to take, it was about two hundred and, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. We have to take it off the top of the sale. So whatever you sell the property for to Keys Grace, that two fifty-five automatically comes off the top. Because we were approved by the Treasury, Department of Treasury to spend it and then we have to pay the funds back. To redirect the two fifty-five.
Was that the bond from two thousand thirteen?
Yes, it was. We spent all of the bond money and we spent that two fifty-five on Keys Grace. And, and the way that it works is you have to take it off the top of the sale. You have to take it off the top of the sale if you sell that property to whomever.
Okay.
Right, do we know what that money went for? I believe it went for the boilers.
I still have a question. And when it couldn't, wouldn't it be feasible, though, to up the selling price so that we can?
Well, the problem you run into there is our appraisal's only worth one point three, and if they're going to finance this, Bill will tell you, if they go through a bank.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's got an appraise for what you, yeah.
Exactly, so that, that's the predicament.
But this is kind of a shock and a surprise that. We didn't know about this.
Yeah, we didn't know about it, it happened in, uh, twenty thirteen. You know, the bond, you had a bond that was approved. And it gets approved by the Department of Treasury to be spent on.
Right, right, right. Most people are in the impression that was going into elementary school. But the way the bond was written. Which allows it to be used at other buildings, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holcomb.
All right, we're still, if we sell it for the one point three, you're still getting three percent a year for ten years of their.
Correct, if you look in the letter here, it says over the life of this agreement, because it's being extended out ten years out. We're still making two point two million dollars off that.
Okay.
Now, if you factor that in, along with the price of the building. Uh, nobody could get a loan for that amount on that piece of property, so it is in our best interest to generate the extra revenue.
Yeah.
Uh, the alternative is to cancel their charter, and I don't think that would, uh, go over too well with anybody.
So what's the total between the price and? The three percent a year for ten years?
Well, if I read this letter correctly here, it is roughly. Three and a half thousand dollars overall.
Yeah, three and a half.
Minus two fifty, we got to pay back on the bonds, which I'm almost certain, Bill might know this better than me. Mr. Pittman, that new boilers were installed in twenty thirteen in that building. The bids went out in late January two thousand twelve, but they went in in twenty thirteen, those are the ones that Setzag are now replacing from the flood.
Yeah, yeah, it did, it was around, I thought it might have even been later than that, and that's why I was wondering if there was any kind of a. Warranty with those, I mean, it's.
Not, not, not from being, not from being flooded. Like they were, they're, they're totally.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't know, I guess I'm not, I didn't know if the boiler caused the flooding.
Oh, no, uh, Mr.
No, no, there was a cut bite there.
No, the boilers weren't even turned on yet.
Okay.
So they, it, it wasn't them, and, and it's unfortunate, because they, if you go see them, other than the watermark, they look brand new, it's, it's unfortunate. First thing I asked, Jarvis says, hey, can we save these? They're, I mean, they're relatively brand new. Uh, and the water had just seeped in there and shot all their. So now they're getting new boilers again.
Stuff like that. Well, the insurance company's paying for the boilers. Uh, the fact that we're doing all these upgrades as a result of this accident, uh. They're paying more, they're paying the full appraised amount that they have. And this goes a long way to getting a new roof on the high school, I believe.
But your insurance premium, don't, we, we don't want to. Uh, fool the public to think that somehow the insurance company, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna absolutely raise our premium.
We're self insu-, yeah, we're self insured, so we will end up paying for this.
They're, they're going to raise our premium.
There's no free lunch.
And so, um, we're already at five hundred percent, so, um, you know.
Has there been any progress into the investigation of how this happened?
No, but they are recommending that we ta-, we take classes. Um, and understand, really, our infrastructure, really, we need, really need to tend to our infrastructure in the district. Um, they're recommending that we take classes on understanding all the infrastructures. There are so many things that we have to address. Um, and, you know, we're limited on resources, but the roof is a priority, but there's other things that are priority, uh, in every building. Uh, but it, it is what it is, we, we have limited resources. Uh, and we are just. You know, tackling one thing at a time.
All right, any other questions? All right, Sarah, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna say no. I just think there's too much unknown right now for me.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Okay, next item, human resources. We've got. Mr. Abdullah Ha would like to approve the layoff for the following district employees, George Barndollar, custodian, Madison Elementary. The motion is, it's recommended the Board of Education approve. The layoff of support staff employees outlined. The administrative comments above. And in the attached resolution. And will someone take this motion?
I'll take.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Discussion.
Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Abdullah Ha to just kind of run through this a little bit, because. I don't, it seems like George has seniority, and I don't really totally understand how this all works, that someone with. More seniority than others.
Um, sure. So.
If you could just run through it real quick, please.
So Karina Stenson had the, had one of the most seniorities. Uh, but what she did is she took a thirty day voluntary layoff per collective bargaining agreement. After thirty days, she has a right to request to be, to, to return. So she has requested to return, and she's, you know, in order for that to happen. Um, then she is replacing George Barndollar, he's aware of it, he was aware of it when. We initially this discussed taking on the morning shift. Knowing that in thirty days, she reserved and retained the right. To reclaim her position, and she made that request with HR. Uh, and HR is working with, um, their union leadership to ma- make sure we're following. The collective bargaining agreement, but yeah, we, we are following seniority. Uh, what we're doing is, when we were in need of custodians, we followed the list. And called people down. Uh, and we have not denied anyone unemployment, even if they told us. Hey, I like to wait for an AM shift to open up. Typically, you can deny them if they say no, but. With, with all this pandemic going on, and, and hardships, we don't want. To cause any more hardships on families, so some people are just waiting for their particular position to open up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? No? Let me get a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next issue is recall of district employees. Mr. Abdullah Ha would like to approve to recall the following laid off. Following district employees, Terry Fields, bus driver, transportation, Karina Stenson, custodian, Madison Elementary. I've, I've got a question on this, but, uh, will someone take this motion to start with?
I'll take it.
Ms., Ms. Castle, a second, Mr. Holcomb, did you second it?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Holcomb, second, now discussion. I've got a question. Um, in view of our vote to go strictly remote with all students now. Terry Fields, bus driver and transportation. Is that still necessary?
Um, bus drivers are not in a CBA, so, um. I, I believe Jamie had recalled them, correct, Jamie?
She was recalled on October twenty sixth, it's a retroactive approval, we needed somebody because. Another bus driver went out on leave, so it was kind of a. You know, last minute, um, thing to get another driver.
I, I can, I can understand that, but does that mean now, if we're going strictly remote for all students? That may be on the next report.
Yeah, I think on the, in the next meeting, we were going to address some of that.
All right, that's the only question I had, uh, anybody else, discussion? No? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right. Next one is the personnel report, it's recommended the Board of Education accept the personnel report. For Madison District Public Schools as presented. Does someone, uh, want to take that motion?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the personnel, personnel report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman, do we have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. At. Discussion. No? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
And now we move to the business office. Business awful, uh, office approval of amended monthly expenditures, it's recommended. Board of Education approved the monthly expenditure, owing one million, four hundred, sixty four thousand, two hundred, twenty eight dollars. And ninety eight cents. Would someone like to take this motion?
I'll take that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Castle. Uh, discussion? No? Okay, roll call vote, Sarah?
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, and that moves us to officers and committee reports, uh, anybody have committee report at all? No? All right, then let's go to board comments, and let's start with Mr. Holcomb.
All right, um. Thanks for parents and teachers not being here today, I, uh. Thank yous for the support, uh, on the election. And, uh, Mr. Pittman, Mr. Kimball, and Barb Castle, sorry, sorry, you's all lost, we're missus. And I would like to congratulate, uh, the other, the other winners, and, uh, that's about it, thank yous.
All right, let's go with, uh, Ms. Castle, go next.
I echo the sentiments of Mr. Holcomb, I'd like to personally thank you, Mark, and Bill Pittman. For your service, Bill, you've been on the board for a long time, and Mark, you have been on the board for quite a while, too. As, um, Mark Holcomb said, your input and your, the value you bring to this board will be missed. I want to congratulate the new, the new, um. But, wow, what's the right word, they're not trustees yet, but they will be in Jan-, in January. I'd like to congratulate all the ladies for, and you, Mr. Holcomb, too, on your win. I know all of you will bring a breath of fresh air, and hopefully some good. Ideas and good experience you'll bring to our board. Um. I'd also like to thank the people that spoke tonight, Mr. Bassler, Mr. Rogers, and Mr., Ms. Rogers, and Mr. Smith, your input is valuable. Um. And I appreciate especially hearing from you, Mr. Bassler, about the, uh. Your fundraising. The, um, procedures and how that all works, I appreciate knowing that. And. Thank you for everybody that came tonight, and everybody, I hope you stay well and safe, and happy holidays, and. Because I don't think we'll see you now until December, so happy Thanksgiving. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, uh, Mrs. Thompson, go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to echo what Mrs. Castle, or Ms. Castle just said. Congratulations to everybody, and thanks, everybody, for coming out. That's it.
All right, Mrs. At.
Um, okay, I just wanted to say one thing real fast to Mr. Abdullah Ha. Um, when I was a custodian in Ferndale, we as head custodians, we took classes on boilers, we took classes on. Um, ballasts, we took classes on a whole bunch of things, there might be something to get the head custodians. You know, more involved, and they can keep a better eye on their infrastructure of their building, just, uh, that's just my own perspective. Um, I want to thank Mrs. Rogers for coming out, and the entire Madison Teachers Association. For letting us know how you guys feel, and, um, I agree with you one hundred percent, I believe, uh, the safety of you. And the students and the parents are, are a number one priority. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, congrats to the, uh, new electors, and, uh, stay safe, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All right, I believe that leaves Mr. Pittman, go ahead.
I, I have nothing tonight.
All right. And that leaves me, I've got a question, is, is, uh, Mrs. Rogers still in the audience? Sarah, do you see her?
I'm, I'm. No, I don't see her.
I, I, I was just curious where, where she grew up, because it's from Rogers, right down the street from me. Um.
Mr. Kimball. Mark, her maiden name was Molner.
Okay, I'm probably not her.
Mr. Kimball, I.
Yes.
Um, I just want to say something, um, I don't know if you saw the retirements. Uh, page, but we, we are, we are losing.
I did skim through them, yes.
Yeah, so I just, just kind of. Chris Sims, I worked with her as her colleague, um, as a teacher, um, and then I had the pleasure of being her principal. Um, she's an amazing person, if you get to know her, and I, I just want to give her a big shout out, because. Um, she was devoted, she loved the district. Um, and there was no task that you, um. You could ask of her, that she would say no, whatever you threw at her. Total team player, and I just want to bring that up, sometimes we forget about. Um, the years of, of, of commitment that people put into the district. Um, twenty, thirty years, uh, same thing with Michelle Stenson, uh, who's also retiring. Years and years of commitment, and, and that's rare nowadays, with all this bouncing around that people do from district to district. It's hard to have that commitment, so I just want to give them both a big shout out, sorry, Mr. Kimball.
Uh, no problem. All right, uh, I want to congratulate the winners of the election. And I just want to say that, uh. I ran for the school board four years ago. To kind of straighten out a situation that I, I think we got straightened out, and, uh. I am good with the voters, and what, who they chose, I really am. So congratulations to everyone that won, thank, thanks to the teachers for showing up tonight, uh. Obviously, the health and safety of staff and students is our number one priority. Uh, and that's all I've got to say, thanks for everyone else showing up tonight, and that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Discussion. Roll, roll call vote, sir?
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
We need to switch up that ru-, ru-, uh, rotation a little bit, we voted on ten things tonight, and I was second, first or second, and probably eight of them.
I'm usually.
I was, I was thinking the same thing, Sarah. Always picking on Pittman, you know?
Same as Sandy used to do that.
It, it, it's predetermined. Mr. Pittman.
I vote yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Stay safe, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye bye, guys.